Your situation will result in a hardship to you, but this does not mean that this board has the power to grant you relief unless the facts of your case are such that the board must act on them. You may be sure full consideration will be given to your case and following this hearing, you will be promptly notified of the board's decision.
Thank you. Board members and staff, please introduce yourselves, starting to my right.
Vanessa Rangel, Planning and Inspections.
Jesus Quintanilla with the City Attorney's Office.
Luis Zamora with Planning and Inspections.
Andrew Sloan with Planning and Inspections.
Elizabeth Thurman-Binkson with the Board.
Christine Lovridge with the Board.
Heidi Avadish with the Board.
Martha Guayo with the Board.
Jorge Leon with the Board.
Fabio Anuria with the Board.
Gloria Clark with the Board.
José Beltrán, Planning and Inspections.
Andrew Giraldi, Planning and Inspections.
Alejandra González, Planning and Inspections.
Blanca Pérez, Planning and Inspections.
Saul Pino with Planning and Inspections.
Thank you.
And Sadiq with the Board, online.
Thank you. Will everyone giving testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Everyone giving testimony today, present, please stand. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you, thank you. Staff, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good afternoon, Chair and Board Members. Andrew Sloan with Planning and Inspections, we have no changes on the agenda for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda as amended or as revised with changes noted by staff. Staff, okay, yeah.
Yeah, if I might, I don't think it is needed. We can just continue to the first item. Is there no changes?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Does the Board have any questions for the staff? Okay, so let's start with the first case, okay.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Board. Blanca Pérez with Planning and Inspections. Item number one on the agenda is a request for special exception B to or more nonconforming lots and special exception K in existence 15 years or more. This aerial map shows the subject property and its surrounding area. It is located at the south of Country Club and west of Tonifin. The property is Zoned R1 Residential. The site plan shows the layout of the property. The existing structures are marked in magenta while the encroachment areas are highlighted in red. The areas highlighted in yellow are allowed additions or encroachments. The applicant is requesting special exception B to allow a new home addition that would extend 13 feet and nine inches into their required rear yard setback. This proposed addition would result in an encroachment of approximately 481 square feet. Additionally, the applicant is requesting approval for a pergola that encroaches six feet into their required 15-foot side yard setback. And lastly, under special exception K, the applicant is seeking to allow to legalize an existing accessory structure that encroaches 15 feet into the side yard setback totaling 270 square feet. This is the current view of the home from Woodland Avenue. This shows the area where the proposed addition would go. It would encroach 481 square feet into the rear yard setback. From the rear of the property, the proposed addition would be 50 feet, three inches away from the back property line. This is a pergola on the side of the home. It encroaches six feet into the 15-foot side yard setback for a total of 120 square feet. And this image shows the accessory structure encroaching the full 15 feet into the side yard setback totaling 270 square feet. This is a structure under special exception K. This map identifies nearby nonconforming lots that have rear and side encroachments and all qualify for this exception. This one right here encroaches 585 square feet into the side yard and 485 square feet into the rear yard setback. This one encroaches 1,450 square feet into the rear yard setback. And this one encroaches 750 square feet into the side yard setback. And this 1,009 aerial confirms that the accessory structure has existed for more than 15 years, supporting the request for special exception K. Notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property on July 31st, 2025, and the planning division has not received any communications in support or opposition of the request. With that, staff recommends approval of both exception requests. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions for the staff?
No.
No? Okay. Is the applicant or representative present to respond to questions or comments from the Board?
Yes.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Jonathan Pieto with Palos Santo Construction, and I will be the contractor working on this project.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
For the record, I need to recuse myself. Thank you. Elizabeth Thurman-Binkson.
Any comments or questions from the Board? No?
No.
Okay. That's it? Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve as stated.
Second?
I second. Heidi, have addition with the Board?
Thank you. Is there anybody here or on the phone to speak on this, on this item? No? Okay. And that's why I thank you for the motion, Ms. Gloria? So, okay, so what do I do?
I believe there was a motion and a second to approve, right? You all can go ahead and vote on that now.
Okay. So the Board approves the motion and the recommendations from the staff?
Did you all vote? I'm sorry.
Do we need to vote?
Yes, uh-huh, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it is approved. Thank you. Thank you for coming, thank you. Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Board. Blanca Pérez with Planning and Inspections. Item number two on the agenda is a request for special exception B to or more nonconforming lots and special exception J, carport over a driveway from the property located at 1024 Los Motos. This aerial map provides an overview of the subject property and its surrounding area. The property is Zoned R2 Residential and is located south of Art Craft and west of Westside The site plan shows the layout of the property with the existing structures highlighted in magenta and the encroachments highlighted in red. The applicant is requesting special exception J to allow to legalize a 20-by-20-foot carport that encroaches 16 feet into their required front yard setback for a total of 320 square feet. The applicant is also requesting special exception B to allow to legalize an existing carport that encroaches eight feet into the required eight-foot side yard setback for a total of 160 square feet. These are both carports elevations with a maximum height of 12 feet. This image shows the current condition of the property as viewed from Los Motos Drive. And here's a close-up of the structures in question. This image shows the encroachment of the existing carport that encroaches eight feet into the side yard setback for a total of 160 square feet. The carport currently located at the front is proposed to be relocated adjacent to the This image shows the proposed new location of the carport at the front of the property. The proposed relocation will be encroaching 16 feet into the front yard setback for a total of 320 square feet. The proposed front setback will be 10 feet. This map shows nearby nonconforming lots that have similar side encroachments that qualify for this request. At 1035 Los Motos, there is a side yard encroachment of approximately 200 square Although aerial imagery has not been updated, the encroachment was confirmed from a site visit. At 1076 Los Motos, there is an encroachment of about 205 square feet into the site setback. And again, site visits have confirmed this encroachment, even though the updated aerial images are not yet available. Notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property on July 31st, 2025, and the planning division has received two emails in opposition to the request, one of them expressing concern for safety due to the strong winds. With that, staff recommends approval of special exception B and approval with a condition for special exception J. The condition is for the finalized carport to resemble their main residence in scale and character. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions for the staff?
I do, Gloria Clark. Okay, so you have two encroachments, the one on the side and then the one that's in the front, correct?
Yes.
So can I see the one on the side, just to clarify that?
So that one would be for the side?
So the red one is what is encroaching at the moment? And then the yellow one is the new one, or are they gonna combine both of them?
So that one is gonna be relocated to the front, and it's gonna look something like that.
Okay, so they're taking the one from the side to the, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question. Last time we met, we asked if we could find out if, when they cite two or more other properties with the same existing characteristics, that you all look into whether or not they had been legalized?
Yeah, so for those two that applied for this exception, they are not legalized as of now. They were just recently installed, and from our records, it doesn't show like they pulled any permits on that.
Okay, and then is it the, or I guess my next question is for the owner or representative?
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant or representative present to be able to answer questions from the Board? Please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sarai Pérez-Gallardo. I thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the Board?
Yes, I have one. So is it your intent to just relocate the front section or to conform with, I may be going too far, conform with the code that it needs to be in keeping with the home?
It will be moving location from the first carport in front of my garage.
So if Miss, Madam Chair, if I might, just to provide some clarification, so this property, there's two canopies installed on the side of the property. We can go on the slide, just to make it clear. This one in the front, and then there's another one kind of similar to this one behind this one. So the proposal is to relocate the one in the front because it is encroaching to the front setback as it is. It doesn't comply with any exceptions, so the, one of the requests is to move it into the, in front of the garage, place it there, which will still be encroaching. And then the other one remaining is still encroaching onto the side setback. So there's two special exceptions being requested, one to legalize the side encroachment of the one that's behind, and then there will be a front encroachment as shown here in the picture if they relocate the front one in front of the garage.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone here or on the phone to speak on this item? Press six to unmute yourself. Okay, any questions from the Board?
Heidi, have addition with the Board? I do. So there was letters that went out, and there was one that came back saying that there was a concern about the strong winds. That would be my concern, too. How, is it cemented into the ground, or is it?
Absolutely, absolutely. It will be invounded to the ground. As it is right now, that's the way it's currently on. We will have the same scenario and the same planograms that we have.
If I might, Luis Zamora again, for the record. So one of the main reasons obviously why the city requires people to pull permits is because that's something the city will check for the construction, to make sure that it's not a safety hazard, that it's properly built, and it will obviously sustain the effects of wind and things like that. So is that something that the city will review once the permits are pulled? Right now, remember that, right now, your purview is whether you approve the encroachment or not after this. This is not allowing them to keep it as it is, or just like, this is not the last step. They just allow them to continue to get those permits so the city can check that everything's gonna be safe, that it's a safe construction.
Okay, thank you. Just, any comments?
Yes, I would also like to add that we have a two-car garage. We have a pickup truck that doesn't fit in the garage. Aside from that, we have two Teslas, and we're really trying to protect our assets, our cars. We have hail, we have dust, we have a lot of, a lot of things going on and go on into the area, and this is really just to protect our assets. I am the only person that works in the house. My husband doesn't work, nor my daughter, and it has been taking a lot of savings to do what we did and go on with this project. Unfortunately, I know it's a different, in a different case, the company that we hired to do that did not request the permits, but we are trying to solve and have everything cleared up and good for us to go.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the Board?
I have one more comment. To the Board. Okay, if I may, yeah, to the Board. So again, the problem with continuing to approve these, in my opinion, is that there's no one else in the neighborhood, so she's, they're, they're asking for a permit based on there's two or more complying properties in the neighborhood, right? So there's no one in the neighborhood, so then we continue to approve these, and it continues to be an issue throughout these neighborhoods because we've approved them prior. Anyway, that's my comment.
I have a question to, to the planning. So like she was saying, Elizabeth, the other two were not conforming, so will the city go back, code enforcement, and maybe try to get them to be in compliance, considering they did not go through the city planning?
Andrew Sloan from Planning and Inspections, for the record. Yes, we do have a list of the properties of the noncomplying lists, of the noncomplying properties, and we give that to PMZ, which is our property maintenance zone. They go and inspect it, and then they cite them for each lot, for each noncomplying lot.
And do then they have the ability to come and make it conforming? You know, do you require that, or you're, they're just cited?
Vanessa Rangel from Planning and Inspections. So anytime an enforcement case is created, the applicant is given time to come into our office, and then we're able to assist them with whatever remedies for their case.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the Board? May I entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve Gloria Clark.
Heidi, have addition with the Board? Second?
Okay, all those that approve?
Aye. Aye.
Any, any opposition?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, it is approved.
Can we get clarification on that, Commissioner Bankston? Was that aye for opposition or for?
Opposition.
Okay, so we're gonna have to do a roll call?
You'll say nay.
That's fine, let me go ahead and do a roll call, we do need to put it on record.
Okay.
So Commissioner Thurman-Bankston was the name?
Nay.
Commissioner Lovridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Avadish?
Aye.
Commissioner Guayo?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Uribe?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, and for Commissioner Cohen as well, I think we needed a...
My apologies, Commissioner Cohen, may I get your vote?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes still.
I believe that if there were two, the motion would actually fail since for the zoning board of adjustment in situations where we're ruling in favor of an applicant, we would actually need seven ayes or seven approvals for the change. So technically, it would fail.
Seven? You need seven approvals?
Yes.
Okay.
And because Mr. Bass isn't here.
Okay, so...
We're short one approval, so we only have six yeses and two no's.
Okay.
So the motion does fail. It's within the Board's authority to postpone it until Mr. Bass comes, and at which point you could discuss or vote again, or you could simply leave it such as it is and let, let it fail.
Okay. Can I, can I say something else? So we have the example on 1032 Los Motos Drive, that carport was approved as it is, and it's exactly the same situation that I'm in right now. Exactly the same. I don't know when it got approved, but it did get approved. That counts as being considered as well, please.
Okay, so Mr. Zamora, I know Justin's on his way. What do you recommend?
So Luis Zamora, for the record. First of all, given that technically the motion has failed, you all can decide to reconsider the item, to continue discussion right now. Mr. Bass did tell us that he's probably not coming, after all, since you all have quorum. Another option, obviously, is to postpone to another meeting. That's another option that can be reconsidered. Again, right now, it has failed, so that's up to the Board to decide.
Okay, may I make a comment? As Ms. Thurman said, that we have gone through this before here at the Board, so are we seeing more happening like this, to where it's not gonna be unusual as we proceed through other meetings? Or is this, again, something that's just for right now happening? So that's why, are we gonna encounter this again? To, exactly, exactly, to where it's not gonna be something, it won't be new anymore?
Every meeting we come to.
Yeah.
There's several.
So is this the new norm?
We approve them, blanketly approving them, and we're basing it on, oh, there's two or more in the neighborhood, so, and no one's, no one's complained, so it must be acceptable to the neighbors to have that happening in their neighborhood.
I mean, that's what I'm asking, though. Since we're seeing more of them, is this something of the new normal to where we're not gonna be questioning any other cases that come to us?
So Luis Zamora again, for the record. So that will be up to the Board's purview, whether, you know, you have the authority to decide on these items. So obviously, you have the authority to either approve or deny as per whatever, whatever the instance is for all of you. So you have the authority. We, we have obviously a lot of carports built throughout the city. It is understandable, the need for it, but there's also regulations that apply. But that's why the, I'll just like to remind everyone, the special exceptions are an option for, that's open for everyone in the city to, to still, obviously, it is not in compliance with the zoning regulations, but this allows them an extra, that's why it's a special exception. It provides an exception for, for them to build it, and this authority is given to the zoning board of adjustment to decide on case by case, whether that's something you, you want to allow or not.
Gloria Clark, I kind of agree with the planning, because I think we should look at each case by case. I know what you're saying, but again, we're in El Paso. It is really hot, people want to protect their assets, their cars. I think as long as they comply either with the utility agreements and they've been approved by the city, that I think we should consider each one as they come across us. Now, I could see if it went up to the street, that was really maybe not conforming, doesn't look really good, but as long as the neighborhoods are not complaining, I don't think we should...
Well, but there are two complaints that were submitted, and she's not in compliance with the other two properties that were cited for the exemption.
Correct, because the other two weren't even.
Right.
And I understand that, but I think we should maybe, my, my suggestion is maybe wait, table it, bring it back and see if we have one more person. If they vote against it, then that's fine, then we could vote at that time if you just wanna not look at all the canopies and porches that they're building.
But that's not what we're saying.
Right, you're just...
We're just saying this isn't, I mean, based on the exemption she's asking for, it doesn't meet that exemption.
Correct.
Because the other two are not in compliance.
I understand. My suggestion is that I would like for it to be tabled, once Justin comes back, maybe.
Okay, Justin, I was just told he's not gonna be attending the meeting.
Right. If you all wanted, you could have a vote on whether you wanted to postpone it until the next meeting, or, or not.
Representative has something to say?
Yeah, I, I believe, I went through the exceptions, I believe we do meet the exceptions on both of them with the city in comparison with other properties. That's all, with all my, with all due respect to everybody, I'm really trying to have it approved because it's been chaos, not only into my personal stress, but also into my pocket. And if you guys give me the opportunity, we did hire a company to do this job. You know, it's not that we did it on our own. Unfortunately, the company didn't follow what they needed to follow, and that's the reason why I'm here. Now, we paid the company, now I also had to pay other fees to be here, and all I, all I ask is for your consideration, your understanding, and it's, it wasn't, if I would have been told you can't do it, I would have not done it. But I'm in the situation already. All I ask is for your understanding to help me protect my assets, and it's just not, for pleasure, it's, it's a need. You know, we have expensive cars, and that's all I'm trying to, to, to explain.
So Mr. Zamora, can we take another vote?
You can take another vote to consider if you want to approve it. Again, it would take at least seven ayes or ayes to approve it, but again, you could also consider postponing it until the next meeting.
Okay.
Gloria Clark, I make a motion to postpone it, and maybe they could provide better information or show us a conforming ones at that time in the future. That's my motion.
Christine Lovridge with the Board, before we ask for a second on the motion, I have a question for the staff. So this designation of nonconforming, this doesn't imply whether or not those other two or more lots in the neighborhood have already been legalized, right? Like legalized, this hasn't gone through the process? It just, that just means that they're, they have some structure that's in the setback or otherwise, you know, would normally trigger this process, right? Of having to go through ZBA to acquire approval? And it like, or, yeah, just can you clarify, like, is, do we, are these all properties that are not, like, have not been legally approved, or these, or are these a mix of... Or are these a mix of currently legalized and currently not legalized, or currently?
So Luisa Mora for the record. I'll try to provide some more clarification. So I'd like to remind everyone, there's two exceptions at play. There's one for a special exception B, which is the one that typically we start looking at two or more non-conforming properties. What was presented is these two other properties, and this is only for the side encroachment. The stolen properties, it was noted, they haven't, they're not legal right now. Now, obviously, they're all gonna have to go through the process if they want to keep them. One of the options is coming here through the zoning Board of Adjustment to get approval for them, or they may just remove them, that's up to whatever they decide. They have options. Now, that's one thing, that's for the side encroachment, which means the second canopy, which was in the back. Then we have another instance where the other exception is a special exception J, which is for the carport. For the carport, and that's for the relocation into front of the garage. For the carport, we typically don't look at other non-conforming properties, so that one goes by its own merits, whether, you know, the board wants to approve or not. Yeah, I mean, so that, that's, you know, that one, we're not looking into other properties that have one necessarily to get, meet the criteria. It's just by itself, it's already, the zoning Board of Adjustment has purview on whether to approve it as it is or not, based on the exception, meeting the criteria.
Okay, so if we were to just narrow to a case where it was just a side yard setback issue, it wasn't this, the other carport specific exception, right? And you were looking at, are there other, two other properties in the neighborhood? When you look, are you only scanning for properties that have, that are in that side, that side yard setback and are not yet legalized through the zoning Board of Adjustment?
No, so we do look at all of them, and then we'll know whether they're legal or not, but we'll look at all of them. Doesn't matter whether they're illegal or not.
Okay, so the count of two doesn't...
That's a minimum, right? At least two, because that's the criteria.
I guess, for me, there is a relevant difference, and I think this is something Commissioner Bass had discussed as well, as well as you, Liz, that, you know, that it sort of depends, like, whether or not this has been something that the board has thought about and approved previously, versus just everyone in the neighborhood, contracts with the same company, they all do it, and that sort of mutually justifies their existence. And I, so is there a way that we can get information about that status of the properties when we're considering these for future meetings? Is that...
So I believe it's part of the staff report, whether they're legal or not, but again, the criteria, it is general, it doesn't require that they need to be legal. So it can be either or, right?
Yeah, just as one reason that the board might consider, you know, we're often going back and forth on these cases, so it's just as one more consideration for us to be thinking about as we decide yea or nay on these things. I don't, I hope I'm asking something reasonable, but tell me if I'm not.
Yeah, no, I mean, we can provide there on the staff report, we can note, if the other ones are found illegal, we find no traces of whether they've been trying to be permitted, and we'll let you know through there. Obviously, the main thing is, here at the meeting, where we're gonna, where you all gonna discuss it.
So the... Oh, yes, ma'am.
Last question, our last item to add. I would like to ask the board member that declined to approve, to please reconsider your approval. It's been really bad, really bad on our house, has put a lot of stress on the house financially again. That's really all I would like to ask, if you guys will give us the opportunity to move on.
Okay. So again, Mr. Samora, can we take another vote?
We have a first, right? There needs to...
Did somebody second it?
Do you want me to re...
Yeah, please read the motion.
Gloria Clark, I make a motion to revisit this case for our next meeting.
Okay, motion has been seconded.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion has been approved. We will revisit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Andrew Geraldi with Planning and Inspections. Item number three on the agenda is a request for special exception C, rear yard setback at 2921 Preswood Road. This aerial map provides an overview of the subject property and its surroundings. The subject property is located south of Album Avenue and west of McCray Boulevard. The zoning map indicates that the property is located in an R3 residential zone. The site plan illustrates that the layout of the property. Existing structures are marked in magenta, while the encroachment areas are marked in red. The applicant is requesting to legalize the proposed 200 square foot encroachment into the rear yard setback that would occur as a result of a proposed addition onto the existing main structure. This image shows the current condition of the property as viewed from Preswood Road. Here is a view of the proposed addition and a portion of the addition that would encroach into the rear yard setback. This image, taken just beyond the existing main structure, highlights the entire portion of the proposed addition that would encroach into the rear yard setback, as well as most of the proportion that is permitted by right. In this image, we see the very extent of the portion of the proposed addition that would encroach into the rear yard setback. Notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property on Thursday, July 17th, 2025. The planning division has not received any communications in support or opposition of the request, and has received one call of inquiry. With that, staff recommends approval of the exception request. This concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for the staff?
Gloria Clark, on that setback, where are the utilities there? Are you encroaching on them, or...
We're not encroaching on the utilities.
They're not behind, underground?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is the representative or applicant present to answer any comments? Yes, sir, come on, come to the podium and introduce yourself, please.
Sure. Good afternoon, my name is Paul Eastless Jr. I am the fiance of the property owner Sylvia Candelaria. She is here behind me, and I'm hoping to entertain any of your questions.
Any questions from the board? No? Okay. Okay, is there anyone here or on the phone to speak on the item? If you're on the phone, please press six, number six, and unmute yourself. May I entertain a motion?
Gloria Clark, I make a motion to approve as presented.
For a second.
Okay. All those in approval, please let me know.
Aye. Aye.
Any in opposition? No? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. Alejandra Gonzalez with Planning and Inspections. Item four on the agenda is a request for exceptional, special exception B to our non-conforming lots for the subject property located at 6260 Fabian Street. Here we can see the property as shown on the aerial image. Subject property is located North Arkcraft Road and East Tonifan Drive. Property is on R5 residential. Here we can see the site plan that depicts the existing layout of the property with the areas of encroachment highlighted in red. The covered porch extends four feet one inch into the five-foot side setback, and the applicant is requesting special exception B to allow to legalize the covered porch that extends into the, for a total of 62.22 square feet. This is the subject property from the front. Here's the encroachment of the porch into the side yard. Aerial photographs indicate there are four other properties on the same block in Abu Dings Street that also contain structures located in their side setbacks and encroach more than the property. We have 6253 Mitchell Street that encroaches on the two sides, five-foot side setbacks, 6217 Mitchell Street that encroaches 180 square feet, 6265 Fabian Street, and 224 Placida Lane. Notices were mailed to the property owners within 300 feet on July 31st, 2025. Planning Division received one phone call of inquiry, but no communication in support or opposition to the request. Staff recommends approval with the condition on this exception request, that the condition being that the gutters and downspots shall be placed on the side structure to retain rainwater within the property. This concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Board, board members, any questions for the staff? No? Okay. Is the applicant or representative present to answer any comments or questions? Please step to the podium and introduce yourself.
Okay, so my name is Carla Rodriguez, I am the daughter of my parents, just 'cause they're not really fluent with their English, so I'm here to answer any questions you guys have for us on that property.
Any questions from the board?
Was that structure added on?
Yes, so we thought it made sense, because on our side porch, like, the side door is like, towards the side of the house, so that is why we were like, oh, we'll build it to the side of the house. If it was towards the back of the house, then we would've built it to the back of the house. But yes, it's just a porch, it's not covered. We've had it for about a year now, and I didn't think, well, we didn't know we had to get a permit or anything, so we're just moving on for that approval from you guys to make sure we get everything done correctly now.
Thank you. Is there anyone present or on the phone to speak on this item? If you are, please press number six to unmute yourself. No other questions from the board? Comments? No? Okay.
And then, I know it did say that the approval for the gutters, and we did go ahead and add that, added that this weekend, just because we did see that email that was a request for approval. So we did go ahead and add, we went ahead and added the gutters, we just forgot to take pictures, but we went ahead and added those onto the porch.
Thank you. Board members, may I entertain a motion?
I make, Gloria Clark, I make a motion to approve.
As stated. Second.
Do you mean with the exception, the staff's exception about the gutters included?
Right, I guess, can they bring a picture next meeting?
Vanessa Ranhel for the record. We do verify that at time of permitting, because it is part of an ordinance that all water needs to shed inside their own property, so it's something we verify at time of permitting.
Motion has been seconded, or you seconded, right?
Yeah, Christine Lovridge, I second.
Okay. All those approving this motion? Please state your yes or no.
Aye. Yes.
Okay, all those in opposition? No? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. Alejandra Gonzalez with Planning and Inspections. Item five on the agenda is a request for a special exception K in existing 15 years or more for the subject property located at 7158 North Loop. Here we can see the property as shown on the aerial image. The zoning district for the property is C4. Here is the site plan that depicts the existing layout of the property with the areas of encroachment highlighted in red. The applicant is requesting special exception to allow to legalize the existing building, which extends seven feet one inch into the side yard setback in which 522.76 square feet of that structure encroaches into the side yard. Here's the subject property from the front of North Loop. Here's the view of the existing building. Here's encroachment of the existing building into the side yard. The existing encroachment has been in existence approximately 22 years, based on the 2009 aerial imagery. The property existed back then as it is, it does today with the building in its current location. Notices were mailed to the property owners within 300 feet on July 31st, 2025, and the planning division has received one phone call of inquiry, but no communication in support or opposition to the request. Staff recommends approval with the condition of the exception request, that the front structure shall be removed or relocated from the 10-feet side setback.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for the staff? No? Is the applicant or representative present to answer any comments or questions from the board?
Good afternoon, board, my name is Vanessa Durana, I'm representing Mr. Vargas, the owner of the property, if you have any questions.
Board, any questions that you may have for the owner? No? Is there a representative present or on the phone? If you are on the phone, please press number six to unmute yourself. No comments or questions? Back there? Okay, I'm sorry, okay, yes, ma'am. May you come to the podium and introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Brenda James, and I'm not coming to oppose, I'm coming for clarification. We are at the church at 7163 Dale Road, which I think you're coming back to that area? And we were trying to figure out, is this coming into the church's area? Okay, that's all, we just wanted clarification, because I couldn't read the map, first of all.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Board members, any other questions or comments? May I entertain a motion?
Fabian Uribe, I make a motion to approve with the condition that the front structure shall be removed or relocated.
Thank you. Who would like to second?
Gloria Clark, I second.
Okay. Okay, all those for approval? Please let us know.
Aye.
Any in opposition? No. Motion has passed, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. Jose Beltrán with Planning and Inspections. Item six on the agenda is a request for special exception C, rear yard setback at 2921 Preswood
Item six on the agenda is a request for a special exception B, two or more non-conforming lots for the property located at 249 Pyrite Drive. The request is to permit the encroachment of an existing carport into the front yard setback. Shown here is the aerial map of the property. The property is located west of I-10 and north of Mesa. Here you can see the zoning map that shows the property is in an R3 zone. Shown here is a site plan that shows the existing layout of the property with the area of encroachment of the carport highlighted in red. The applicant is requesting exception B to allow for the modification of the required front yard setback. If approved, it will allow for the carport encroachment of 198 square feet. Here's a view of the subject property taken from the front of the home. Here's a closer view of the existing carport. Here's just a side view showing the encroachment and the requested front setback of two feet. Looking at the aerial photographs, there are two other properties in the same block or budding street that also contain structures located in the front setback that encroach more than the subject property. We have 245 Pyrite, and we have 241 Pyrite. I just want to make a note that 245 Pyrite has been legalized. Notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet on July 31, 2025, and the planning division has received just one phone call of inquiry, but no communication in support or opposition. And to conclude, staff recommends approval of the exception request.
Thank you.
Thank you, concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Board members, any questions to the staff? No? Okay. Is there someone present or on the phone to comment on this item? Please stand and introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, my name is Jonathan Singer. I'm the property owner of the house.
Okay, staff, board members, any questions?
Gloria Clark, board member. I want to see the drawing again of the encroachment. Oh, no, the actual picture. So, you're basically bringing it forward? Is that what you're doing at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
It's kind of hard to tell here. Good.
Jose Beltran, for the record, here's just a side view of the carport, showing the extension.
All the way to the back. And so, will that encroach, because I see an electric pole there with the wires? Are you gonna be, are they gonna be over it? How much setback of easement or?
There is no utility easements in the front. So, this is to the, towards the front of the property. So, there are no utility easements in the front. The wires you see, I believe, are to the side setback. But there will be no encroachments over easements.
All right, thank you.
For the front setback.
Is there anyone present on the phone to speak on this item? If you are on the phone, please press six to unmute yourself. No? No questions from the board?
I have one question. When was this added to your property?
I believe I built it in May.
Any other comments or questions from the board? May I entertain a motion?
Gloria Clark from the board. I make a motion to agree on the conforming porch, correct? Is that what we're doing? To, on the, we're approving the porch, right? I make a motion to approve the, as stated, the porch on the side, right?
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Side echo in second.
Thank you. All those in approval, please?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in opposition?
Nay.
Is that a nay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, based on the fact that there aren't two legalized properties.
Okay.
So, the exemption doesn't apply, in my opinion.
Based on the opposition, I do need you to roll call one more time, please.
Okay.
So, Commissioner Termin Begston?
Nay.
Commissioner Lovridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Abadish?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Aguayo?
Aye.
Commissioner Uribe?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
And Commissioner Coin?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir, it's been approved. Thank you, board members. May I hear a motion to, or any questions or comments? No? May I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We have minutes as well, item seven?
Oh, that's right. That's right. Okay.
Item number seven.
Okay, Mr. Samora?
Well, that's for you all to vote on the minutes.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Christine Lovridge, oh, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the minutes. Jorge Leon.
Christine Lovridge, second.
Second, minutes have been approved. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
If I might, just before we all adjourn. Where in August next month is September, obviously. Just to make a reminder, some terms are gonna expire at the end of September. There's typically a month holdover to continue, unless there's no appointment, then you may continue. I'll just say, I encourage all of you to, well, the ones that may expire, to reach out to your, the person that appointed you, the city representative that appointed you, to, if you want to continue here, you may be reappointed. Also, if you know of anyone else interested, so, to please reach out to us, to let us know who's interested. Obviously, I don't want to say send their resume yet, but let them know to keep in touch with us, so we can let the city representatives know, as well as the mayor, so we can have, obviously, more people, as you were, we should have at least, well, technically, at most, nine people in here, at least seven to make call. So, just as a reminder, keep in mind, and we'll reach out to you if your term is expiring, we'll let you know. We're also gonna be reaching out to them, as a reminder, to the city representatives and the mayor. That's all.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Samora. Thank you, board members, I hope to see you all next month. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Can we get a motion to adjourn, please?
Oh, yes, do I, I thought we did. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I second.
Who set the motion? Did somebody set the motion? Fabian?
I set the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I second.
Okay, thank you.
I'll in favor.
Go ahead.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye. Who wants to stay here? Okay, thank you. Thank you.